Quiet, please. All twisted around, sorry. Well, good evening. I, Paul Diffely, hereby call the Board of Education regular meeting to order at, wow, 5:00 PM, right on the dot. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestreamed for public viewing. I would like to welcome the community members in attendance this evening. As a reminder, governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board, which is held in public, and although public participation is encouraged, it's not, I shouldn't say this, but I will. It's not the public's meeting. Okay, we'll be all right. It's the duty of the board president and/or clerk of the board to maintain an orderly, respectful, and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices, and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking while another person has the floor, just like if you would be in class, let one student at a time, right? Okay. We'll call the class to order. At the appropriate time on the agenda, individuals wishing to provide public comment will be called upon, one at a time, to do so in accordance with Board by law 9323. The clerk, Mrs. Young, will call you at the appropriate time. The board cannot and will not respond to non-agendized items, but a staff member will reach out to you on matters that may need to be reviewed as appropriate. We have a quorum present with four board members in attendance. Let the minutes show that trustee Lindelen is absent. Isabella Acosta, would you lead us, please, in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we could have the flag salute. Reminds us of all the veterans and the people in the armed forces, both under the water, on the water, land, sea, and air. We've got a couple in space. Hopefully, that'll be home before Christmas, but I'm not sure. Okay. Item A4, approval of the agenda, calls for a motion.
All moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, it's good to see so many people at a board meeting, that's exciting. Obviously, have nothing else to do. Not gonna say that, because there's so many things going on that I was wondering if anybody would show up, but I'm glad you're here. First, at my final meeting, I want to give thanks to all the classified staff that keeps all the schools running and up to date where budgets permit. Our public should be proud of the care given to our schools and the maintenance budgets that keep them painted and equipped. Not all of you get to go on campuses, different campuses, but we have that privilege, and I'll tell you, our schools shine, really do. It takes 24-hour, sometimes, work to do that, if it's a heavy rain, or a pipe bursts, or mice get too rowdy. But they do a great job. Secondly, a shout-out to the teachers and principals. During my 20-year tenure, they perform miracles daily, rain or shine, and have worked so hard to bring the district to the number-one position in all of Riverside County, which is one of the largest counties in the state, high up on that list as well. To keep this all in order, 23,000 students and 2,000 or 3,000, how many classified staff roughly do we have?
Approximately 1,200.
1,200. These folks do a wonderful job creating order and maintaining all the different sections that keep tight control of all sorts of orders, budgets, so on. Just running the transportation department, for example, would make me crazy, but then I am. But the people that run it do so and can substitute for others in case they need it. And it's another example of the cooperation that we enjoy in this district. To keep this all in order, we have many, many secretaries, senior staff, accountants, and supervisors. These folks do a wonderful job creating order and maintaining all the different sections that help us keep tight control of all sorts of budgets and so forth. All this even when we were adjusting to COVID. I don't mean to swear, I didn't mean to say the word COVID, but I had to do that. Folks, you must understand now, if you don't already, and some of you do. Chris here, you were with us at the start. You have to understand that we are now a small city within a larger city. A small city which must have many eyes on many areas, 24/7. The job of five trustees and Dr. Anders, our superintendent, is to move us forward in the right direction without chaos or confusion. This requires discipline and understanding that it normally takes a minimum of three yes votes of us five trustees to get things done. For those of you coming in as trustees, this will require learning and understanding to guide the three new members through a seeming maze, which requires patience on the part of our staff and on the new trustees. We all make mistakes, and you make more when you're new, but you make fewer, or at least learn how to cover them up when you're older. During a trustee's tenure, patience and learning are paramount. One must understand that one cannot turn a huge cargo ship, or it used to be a huge battleship, or a carrier, take your pick, on a dime, can't be done. You'd like to just swing that sucker around and take off in a different direction, but we're big, and it seems like we're cumbersome, that everything is running well, it just takes a little longer to turn the ship, which is something I had to learn. Not in the Navy, I mean the ship of the district. We built several schools during the past 20 years of my tenure, and must build another one, as well as finance and remodel several support buildings to get out of our ancient portables. I'd like to live to see the day when we are out of ancient portables, that I could pass on peacefully. As well as provide new spaces for career tech education courses. And what kind of a school will it be? What new courses must we be teaching? Where will it be built? Lots of good questions. I thank especially trustees that I've worked with in the past and the support you've given me and my family during the past 20 years. A special thanks to Dr. Shear, Pat Kelly, and Dr. Anders for caring so much about the health of our school district. They spend lots of hours doing different things, too. Things that we were in bed, and sometimes those things happen, and they have to be there, and as well as the staff, so with the staff. Well, A4, approval of agenda, we call for a motion. Oh. Oh, so we are, yeah. Special recognition, Dr. Anders.
Thank you, we're gonna recognize some of our students who've done some amazing work. They're sitting over here with their fabulous medals, so I'm gonna call them up in just a minute, but I'm gonna join you on the floor. All right, see, like, they follow directions. I used to be a PE teacher back in the day. All right, let's spread out a little further that way. Awesome. You can squeeze, you can spread out. You will not be asked to perform. So gathered with us tonight, I am delighted to recognize some extremely talented, I mean, the other way, because pictures are being taken. Some extremely talented students who danced their way into international success. Yes, and experienced some tremendously powerful moments. Oh. I guess we're done. Wait till you hear what they've done. These dazzling students competed in the International Dance Organization's World Tap Dance Competition in Prague, Czech Republic, during last week of October. This is a federation competition, nonprofit, with over 40 nations and six continents competing for the distinguished title as one of the best international tap dancers. In this process leading up to the competition was arduous, and the students went through national selection process. They each auditioned for the United States Dance and Sports Federation. The audition process to represent the country was in-person and through online submissions. Dancers who made it through this step then became finalists, who must be approved by the International Dance Organization prior to competition. The International Dance Organization only accepts three dancers in each age division category, such as solo, duo, and group tap dance. Am I accurate so far? Okay, thank you. Okay, here we go, now this is when you get ready to applaud. The impressive group in front of you were part of a Team USA and brought home two golds, one silver, a fourth place, and a sixth-place finish. To put this in perspective, they competed against 1,700 performers from around the world. Now. I was not the PE teacher that helped him with this one. Coach Michelle Minor is the one, and these following students, I'm gonna read their names, all right? So we've got from Lisa J. Miles, are you in order? Probably not. So step forward, when I call your name, just take a little step forward, okay? Kensley Dibble.
Thank you.
From Thompson Middle School, Alexa Graves. And correct me if I say it wrong, Sarah Coops. Sierra Coops, thank you. Thank you, Sierra. Leah Munson.
Yay!
Awesome. From Dorothy McLehaney, Marie Smith. Lacey Powers. Morgan Weir.
Not here tonight, she's not here.
Is she in choir? Okay, they gotta do that. All right, I know how important that is to families. Dean Norris from Murrieta Valley High School. And from Vista Murrieta, Aiden Becker. And McKenna Weir. Coach, would you like to say a few words?
I appreciate it, I don't have anything planned, but I did want to thank all of the superintendents, all of the teachers, all the staff in the Murrieta District for accommodating these dancers. The amount of work, I'm emotional, because it's a lot of work. The amount of work they put in is exceptional. These dancers are dancing five to seven days a week, upwards of 20 hours a week, easy. And not just in tap, but in all genres. Tap is just one of their genres, and we do have one of the strongest tap programs in the country. And so, that's, you know, the community is great, because we have a lot of different studios in this area that really have great tap programs, and we're able to bring them all together to create such a great team. And so, between, you know, having a choreographer and a coach, and the children that really, really commit, and the studios that back me and the dancers, it makes for this exceptional situation. And we will continue to do this, year after year, it's only going to grow from here. And so, again, I really thank the district for being accommodating to these dancers when they leave for a week. And I hope that in the future, that we will continue to have this easy step to be able to get their work and be able to travel, and that it's always known that in October, Murrieta is going for the gold, so. Thank you so much.
Again, it's a great opportunity to recognize our students, and we can tell the tremendous work that goes into that, right? I have a little granddaughter who's six, who tries to tap. It was quite funny watching the April thing, April's dance group, but I know what goes into that, so thank you for all you do. So congratulations, and we're glad to accommodate. Your experiences in school that we get to help facilitate are what makes school special. That's what makes it memorable, and that's the strength of our community, is that we do these things that go beyond the typical classroom experience to build upon what you may learn in school to the next level, so thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I know we're gonna want to take a photograph here, so hold on, Alexa. Sierra. Leah. Marie. Lacey. Lacey Powers. Morgan. Dean. Aiden. All right, I'm sure you're gonna want to take a photograph, right? Thanks to the parents also, because we know it's just not our coaches and our teachers, moms and dads, we know you made that happen, so thank you very much. I don't know if you want to stick around for the entire board meeting? Now would be the time to go.
That's a lot of fun. Next week, we'll have the choir, and then the week after. Oh, wait a minute, no. I wish we could, though. In the past, we have had small performances from various groups and various schools. It really is refreshing, because you get to see things you might not be able to see. And I think it's really worthwhile, so I charge you with that. Doctor. Okay, we'll have a test in the morning. All right. Now we have student reports. This is probably the highlight of the evening, and we should be charging for it. We could make a good budget for that. First will be Isabella Acosta, Vista Murrieta High School representative. Welcome.
Hello, good afternoon, I hope you're all doing well. I'm extremely honored to speak on behalf of Vista Murrieta, and without further ado, I will begin. Sorry. Okay. Tonight, we're hosting our culture night on campus. This is a great way for everyone to share their cultures and really bond with one another. We had our drama group travel to Disneyland, and they were able to participate in a musical theater workshop. They also had their fall production, which was out of the frying pan. For this production, people were able to either buy a ticket or they could bring in canned food items for our canned food drive. Additionally, they also have their auditions for the Addams Family. We had our marching band and color guard travel to Orlando, Florida to partake in the Bands of America Orlando Regional. They placed first overall in their division and second against the top band in Florida. We had our club pumpkin contest. This was a really fun way for clubs to showcase their creativity and have some fun on campus. We also had our freshman movie night. Freshmen were able to create some bonds and become more welcomed on campus with their leaders. And upcoming, we have our winter sports rally. We're gonna be welcoming our winter sports into their new seasons, and we're excited to see where those will take them. For our academics, we had an avid field trip to Cal State University of Fullerton and UC Irvine. We were able to take 50 students. We also have been having some fun in classrooms. In one of our Math 3 classrooms, our students were able to use math and movement to better understand polynomial behaviors and visualize patterns. In another classroom on campus, students were able to have fun with a pumpkin dissection and just have some fun and engagement on Halloween. We also had our CTE education courses wanting to attend a Future Educator Summit. They were able to learn about the opportunities Cal State, San Marcos offers to these education students. They learned about STEM and team maker spaces, and they were able to participate in projects that had them design their dream schools. For our athletics, across country, pictured up there is one of our athletes, Erica Kirk. She was recognized on a Press Enterprise news She was recognized on a Press Enterprise newspaper article for her commitment to cross country and her family. We also had our boys and girls cross country compete in the Southwestern League finals. For football tomorrow, the boys will be um, participating in round two of CIF. For girls tennis, they participated in CIF quarterfinals on Monday. For our unified sports team, they traveled to Marietta Mesa for flag football and they won that, so they are currently two oh in their season. For girls golf, they had a CIF team playoff and unfortunately they did not advance, but we are still proud of their efforts. For um, wrestling, boys and girls wrestling started on November fourth and we're excited to see where their season will take them. For student support, we wanted to highlight one of the staff members on campus who is constantly building accountability through support to students. Some of the restorative practices Mr. Munoz is taking is asking students what happened, asking them what they were thinking at the time, who has been affected and in what ways, as well as what next steps need to be taken. Um, up there is a short little um, saying from him, a little blurb. He says, "I'm a product of public schools, so I understand how easy it can be for students to feel overlooked or get lost in the crowd. That's why it's incredibly important to me that every student I interact with knows just how special they are and that they have the ability to achieve great things, not only in school, but in life as well." Our student support has been working with the students to resolve any issues they may have while also minimizing the amount of time they are missing in class. There was a professional development carousel on campus. Bronco staff were able to participate in a carousel of seminars during professional development day and continuously generate ideas to strengthen the work they do at the ranch. They were able to turn pages of possibilities, continuously learning and growing. On the ranch, we had our blood drive. Students, staff members, and community members were able to donate blood to those who may need it. We also have our canned food drive. Um, last year we had a goal of receiving twenty-five hundred canned food items. This year we are raising that to three thousand after successfully meeting last year's goal. And all of these items will go to the Marietta Community Food Pantry. We had our veterans service project today. On campus, students were able to participate in a couple of different activities. Some of those were um, origami poppy making in remembrance of those who have risked their lives for us currently or in the past. They were able to make bookmarks for these veterans and they were also to make, also able to make some Valentines for vets. We had red ribbon week visits. Um, student leaders were able to visit uh, elementary schools and middle schools to help develop useful strategies and live drug free. And we also had our leadership CADA conference where student leaders were able to learn about ways to promote inclusion on campus and really emphasize student engagement. And that is all. Thank you for your time and I am extremely grateful to have this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Megan Lewis, Marietta Valley High School. Welcome.
Hi Board, hi everyone. I'm so glad to be back to be sharing what has happened this past month on MV. There's quite a bit that has taken place. Academic wise, our English departments have taken the F I A B, which is focused independent uh, focused independent assessment block. And that was basically a little quiz, kind of like a practice CASP test. Our students took the S Fab yesterday at ten. That's basically to help them find, figure out what they want to do after high school. Uh, our twelve week grades just ended. Few weeks, like last week, they close on Monday tutoring. We have tutoring before school and that is targeted for our ELs, which is our English learners. They have been going and they've loved it, they're loving it. They really like getting that help. Our math department had student of the month. That's basically where our math teachers can nominate a student that is doing really well in their class and they come in the Hawk Rock and have lunch with their family and that teacher. Our eleventh grade math students have taken the practice CASP test this week and the kids that missed it are making it up next week. And we had our first school site council meeting and we discussed the plan for student achievement. Fall sports, girls volleyball did really good this season. They absolutely killed it. They actually made program history. Uh, this is the furthest, furthest they have gone. Um, unfortunately, they lost Tuesday by two points in the fifth set. So their season has unfortunately ended, but that was the first round of states and their record was twenty-nine to eight. Our cross country program continues in process. I really don't know how they do it still. Um, they, the girls took league title for champions. Again, the boys took runner up. Um, all of their, all members of the team have made it to CIF and nationals. We can't wait to see what they do. They continue to beat school records. Golf wise, the team was good, but a sophomore, Maddie Salmon, yet again, has made it and is continuing her season to CIF. She's absolutely killing it on the course. It is very fun to watch. Uh, other sports, football. I don't know if you guys know this, but Vista and MV kind of rivals. Uh, sorry. Um, football has been on fire. I'm not sure if you heard, but we did have a fourth beat. And if you don't know, don't know what that is, we have beat Vista for the fourth consecutive year in a row. Unfortunately, the game was remarkably close, fifty-seven to fifty-five, and the students in the student section were quite literally quaking in their boots. We were all hoping they were not going to make their two-point conversion. They didn't, but we still won. And now they made it past the first round of CIF Division Two against Rancho Cucamonga last Friday. The score was forty-nine to forty-two. They are now advancing to round two of CIF and they play again tomorrow at Los Alamitos. We hope they bring home the dub. Um, boys water polo, they have won. They are now league champs for the twenty-fifth year in a row. They had an amazing season with an overall record of twenty to ten. Unfortunately, they came short of CIF and they lost last Tuesday by like five points. But we were very proud of what they got to accomplish this season. Unified leadership participated in flag football that Mesa hosted. They did phenomenal. They loved it. They came back. It was Halloween. They got candy. It was hyped. Um, culture and climate, like I said, it was rivalry week and that played a big part on our campus. Our students love getting involved, but we did have a Day of the Dead thing. We had an altar on the thirtieth and thirty-first, which LSU put up for us in the middle of our quad. It was very fun to hear Mexican music. I don't know about you, but I love it. It makes me happy. It's like you just want to dance. Um, it was a great time to get to know that culture a bit more. We also have Operation Christmas Child. And if you don't know what that is, it's basically where you get a shoebox or a box and you fill it with hygiene products or toys for kids ranging between like three and seventeen. And that goes to less, the less fortunate. We have lots of community service hours, so if students will need to participate, well, get them, they can. Um, we had our first signing day of this year for our seniors. A lot of them did sign to colleges. We are so proud of them. And our ASP leaders had an amazing opportunity to attend Red Ribbon Week at feeder schools throughout October. That was just a little clip of what took place at a rival rally. It was amazing. It was super fun. Like lots of people got hyped. Other activities we had is our VE program had their first mini compet- trade show at, it was called Fountain View. Um, it was in Orange County. They originally had a goal to sell two hundred units since it was their first trade show. They excelled that goal and sold over two hundred and forty-eight units. It's amazing. They're doing really well. Love their program. Our cheer team, co-cheer had a competition last Saturday. They won. They qualified for nationals, so they are off to do that and they're practicing really hard. Our crips and cadets, our band program, also had a competition that day. They placed pretty well. Our robotics teams qualified for quarterfinals and teams A and D made it to semifinals and teams A and D are having another competition this weekend. Can't wait to see what they do. And our drama just finished up their first play, which was a failure to love story. Upcoming events is we have a special Olympics run, color run. And if you aren't doing anything this Saturday, you guys can scan that QR code, come run, or you can volunteer and get involved and help set up obstacles and stuff. It's going to be really fun. Our math departments will also be taking the second star assessment later this month or beginning of next month. And we have our winter sports rally. They've begun preseason and in case you don't know, if you're not doing anything next Wednesday at seven PM, come to the Hawk House and watch our girls play their first game. It's highly encouraged. We have Thanksgiving break coming up within a week and we have our upcoming winter rally. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Caitlin Coleman, Marietta Mesa High School Representative. Welcome.
Everyone, I hope you've had a wonderful week. It's really nice to see you all. Um, we've been up to a lot lately. So right here you can see, these are all of our staff members who participate in our yearly Halloween costume. They were all, where's Waldo this year? Turned, turned out amazing. I loved seeing them all dressed up and students findings, um, teachers all over campus. They had a lot of fun. For activities, we had our homecoming spirit week. That was a big success. We had a lot of students um, compete in that so that way they could earn points towards your grade level competitions. Our freshmen had a pumpkin hunt. Um, it was amazing. They hunted pumpkins all around the school. There were sparkly pumpkins and they won prizes through that. We had Dancing with the Rams, which is our like, it's kind of like Dancing with the Stars, but Mesa edition. So obviously it's better. Um, so we have our dance team. They get to come work with some of our other students and dance in pairs and compete. So we have our favorite dance pair and then we also have our dance pair who scored the highest points. We had our spike ball tournament. That was super fun. There was over, I think, twenty or thirty teams that signed up to compete. It's a week-long tournament. Um, they play at lunch, so everybody gets to come watch. And then our CIF round one football, we won. Um, we had a neon themed game. It was freezing, but we still had a bunch of students turn out. So that was amazing. And then tonight, we currently have our athletic talent show. So I know you guys are busy tonight, but if you could be there, I really wish you could. It's an amazing show. All of our sports get to compete. They get to do random dances. Some of them are singing, some of them are breakdancing. It's going to be crazy. For academics, we just had our PSATs um, last, at the end of October on the twenty-third. We had our California State San Marcos. They came to visit Mesa's campus and they had BOBO with some of our Pacific East Asian Island students. Um, and then our National Honor Society got to show up and basically represent our school in the Mesa Veterans Day Parade. For RAM Athletics, this Friday, we have our football team competing in the CIF quarterfinals um, against Ontario Christian. It's going to be an amazing game. You can get in for free if you bring at least two cans of food and for the first two hundred students that do that get to bring uh, or get to go in for free. And that all goes towards our Feed the Harvest for Thanksgiving and our Marietta food program. Um, our water polo team, I am so proud of them. They made it to the CIF quarterfinals. They did really good. Unfortunately, they lost. It was really a big bummer, but they, it was a really close game. Um, our girls water polo, they have their first game tomorrow. I'm really excited to see how they do. I know they're going to be amazing. And then we have our boys soccer. They are starting soon. They just um, released their rosters, so they have a really big team this year and I guarantee you they're going to do amazing. Our girls tennis, they unfortunately did not win league finals, but they did really good and all of them got to participate in league finals this year. Um, and then our Marietta Mesa Wrestling has their first tournament next week. It's going to be really fun. Uh, our girls do amazing and our boys do pretty good as well. For Mesa Performing Arts, we had the MVUSD District Showcase that was at Vista. Um, that was really fun for a lot of our band students. They truly enjoyed it. And then we have coming up the Bang Bang You're Dead Play, which is, as you probably know, a tribute to like school shooting awareness and it's really moving for a lot of our students. Um, we make sure all of our freshmen get to go see it. And then if you want to go see it, you, you can come on the twenty-second. And again, if you want to get in for free, you can bring two cans of food for our food drive. And then our color guard and band got to participate in the Veterans Day Parade. For Mesa Culture, we have our Beast Staff of the Month. That's our athletic trainer right up there. She is amazing. She helps everybody, no questions asked. Um, but she truly is one of the sweetest people on our campus. For our Beast Athlete of the Month, we have Jeremiah. He made varsity football freshman year. He's doing amazing. Um, and then we had our student lunch games, which also go with our homecoming week and all of our points are tallying up. We're doing amazing, guys. We're in like the thousandth on the points range and juniors are currently winning. So, you know, junior's always on top. And then we had our avid donut day, um, where all of our avid students got to come get donuts and there was a lot of fun with that. For homecoming, you guys just missed it. It was like the week before the last board meeting, but it turned out amazing right here on the top. You can see pictures of our homecoming rally. Um, we have students participating. We have our cheerleading team. We have our staff playing games. They had a lot of fun playing games. And then right here you can see um, our floats from our senior homecoming court. They did beautiful when they made those floats. And our homecoming game, you guys, we won with a score of seventy to zero. Yeah. We, we annihilated them, so I'm really proud of our football team. And the dance was super fun too. We had a lot of food trucks around. We had photo booths. We had face painting. We had all kinds of really fun stuff. A lot of students truly enjoyed that. That's it. Thank you guys so much for this wonderful opportunity.
Gavin Larson, Marietta Canyon Academy.
Uh, Gavin's not here tonight. He went home sick today, so we will admit, we'll pass on him. See you this time.
Item B four. Public comment. Now I have to read this. We could probably do it all ourselves because we've done it so much. Have a choir reading of the public announcements. At this time, the governing board welcomes public comments. Individuals wishing to address the board are requested to complete a request to address the Board of Education card located at the entrance to the boardroom and submit it to the executive assistant. In accordance with Board Bylaw nine three two three, individual speakers shall be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on any item on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item for to twenty minutes. The board shall take no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda as, except as authorized by law. However, there's always a however. However, in exceptional circumstances, when necessary, to ensure full opportunity for public output. Input. Output doesn't matter. The board president may, with board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker. Okay. Here we go.
Okay. Uh, first we have Frances Burns, followed by Steve Campus.
Welcome, Mr. Burns.
Good evening, President Tiffly. Uh, before I begin, can I have a point of order question directed at Dr. Andrews?
Certainly.
Uh, Dr. Andrews, uh, after I or anybody else makes a public comment, is anybody on this side of the, whatever you call these things, are they permitted to respond?
There's a lot of ifs in there. Um, typically, public comment is singular and it's just a public comment for the board. And however, uh, other, it, so typically, no, there's not usually a comment or a dialogue. This is not a meeting of dialogue. This is the board's meeting and it is to hear that. So other conversations are best handled in a different forum, not in an exchange in this, because this is the board's business meeting.
Right.
And so it's intended to receive input from the public.
Right.
Typically, that's the case.
Oh, typically, that's the case.
Typically, I mean, i- in other ways, I have seen lots of board meetings and people behave badly.
Mm-hmm.
In board meetings. I'm not referring to here alone.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
In my years of experience. Um, and so I recommend that people do a lot of listening. That's why we all, that's why we all have two eyes and two ears. And we'll do more observing. So I don't recommend it, but in So I don't recommend it, but in terms of like, a procedural process, I would think that even like our board bylaws are somewhat vague in what is allowable or not.
All right.
Does that help?
Yeah, well, I was under the impression that, that anybody up here in front of me was not allowed to respond directly, so.
That if you, if you listen to the statement, the board, board members
Right.
do not typically respond. A member of staff may.
They may, okay.
A member of staff.
Yeah, I understand.
District employee.
Right.
A district, a member of my direct staff.
Okay.
And typically, that is done usually in the foyer or as a follow-up later. And that's also why we like to capture people's comment card information so we can follow up.
All right.
Does that help clarify?
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, yes. So, good evening, board members. Good evening, President Tiffly. Good evening, Dr. Andrus. At the last meeting that I spoke, I made some public comments. They were, I had some issues over some of the MEA signs, and the attorney said that I could speak on that. It was my First Amendment constitutional right. And what I was deeply disappointed was with Ms. Murray's comments that followed afterwards. I thought her comments were very unprofessional. They were condescending, and frankly, they were meant to be intimidating. So I have a response to Ms. Murray. Ms. Murray, you are not my employer. You are not my supervisor, and you are not my representative. And so I don't care what you think I should be talking about and not talking about, but I will express myself anytime, anywhere. I think that anything related to the, to the district is detrimental to students or to parents. Secondly, you made some of my business public, and you had no right to do that. None whatsoever. You told the public that I was not a member of the union. Well, that's confidential information, and you were way out of line. And I'm telling you right now, you ever do something like that again, I will personally file a lawsuit against you.
Quiet, please.
It was not your place to do that. And if you don't like any, some of my comments, then maybe you and your union should change its policies and procedures. I have the right to speak about these issues as stated by the lawyer. Now, since you did make my business public, now I feel compelled to share with the public why I left the union. I don't have enough time to do that, but I will say one thing. The primary reason I left the union is because of politics. And if you take, if anyone does a close examination of the MEA and the CTA, and the candidates that they back, and the legislations that they support, is extremely one-sided on the political dais. It amounts to being a support for the Democratic Party. And that's why I have, that was my primary issue for leaving the union. There are other reasons, but I don't have time to articulate it right here. And I would all encourage you to get a book. It's called Standing Up to Goliath. It's written by Rebecca Friedrichs. She was one of the original plaintiffs in the Janus ruling that gave teachers the right to leave the union and to not to pay political dues. It's a very insightful book about how the unions operate behind the facade that they present to the public. Thank you for listening.
So after Steve Campos, we have Yash Mopur. Hope I didn't mispronounce that.
Mr. Campos.
Not here. Okay, so Yash Mopur, if I, did I, can you correct me if I mispronounced your name?
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm excited to introduce you to OBOOTS, a STEM-based robotics and coding program designed for children aged six and 18. Our mission is to ignite young minds, helping them explore the exciting world of robotics and technology through hands-on learning and innovation. At OBOOTS, we offer after-school programs and robotics clubs, workshops, in-school curriculums, and customizable programs to meet your specific needs. Our program is built around a multidisciplinary curriculum that teaches children key concepts in robotics, coding, and engineering. It's not just about learning, it's about doing. With hands-on activities, children experiments, innovate, and build robotic models throughout the course. Just an example, nine-year-old children build, you know, like garbage collector, like machines or hydraulic lifts. And a 12-year-old has written like 250 lines of code to build like a parking monitoring system as well. These are just a couple of examples. OBOOTS trains children on essential skills and concepts. They learn the foundations of physics and mathematics through physical applications. They explore emerging technologies like automation and artificial intelligence. They create engineering-based prototypes, bringing their imaginations to life. They develop coding skills and learn to build functional machines. Most importantly, they see how science and technology connect to real world, problem-solving through live projects. With years of experience in running robotics and coding programs, and even conducting robotic Olympiads, OBOOTS has helped countless children unlock their potential. We are excited to bring this opportunity to your schools and collaborate to inspire the next generation of innovators. Let's equip our children with the tools to lead in a technology-driven future. Thank you, and I look forward to discussing how we can work together. Thank you.
A question. Could you, do you have a card you could leave with our secretary?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anara. Our last speaker is Pamela Tiffly.
Welcome.
Welcome, Paul.
I have to say that I won't get breakfast.
We've been married for 50 years. For anybody that didn't get the gift. But I have a very important thing that I want to talk to you about tonight. Oh, and welcome the rest of you. Anyway, because we are a city with five voting precincts for Board of Education seats, all voting-age citizens need to know who is on the ballot for which seats and the views of each prospective trainee. Trustee, I propose that two debates be held for all future Marietta Valley School District Board elections. The debate should include all candidates from each district and be held four weeks and two weeks respectively prior to the final election. There needs to be a moderator to set debating times and rules. Nonpartisan moderators could be assigned with help from the Riverside City League of Women's Voters, whose services are free. The organizer of the event must be the, might be the Marietta Valley School District Superintendent of Schools, like Dr. Andrus. I suggest the event be held at the Marietta Mesa High School Gersherun Performing Arts Center, as it is the largest comfortable event space. I further suggest that Marietta Valley Unified School District audio and video personnel be present to perform their duties. Advertising for the event might be by way of the district's automatic phone systems, advertising the event to all, and also by way of two newspapers and by means of their internet. Advertising could communicate that the event may be seen either in person or online, adding that a recording could be offered. All those personnel necessary for the event should be paid. Thank you, and I'm Pamela Tiffly. That's it. We're done.
Well, we have employee organization reports at B5. Lisa Murray, President, Marietta Educators Association, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I represent over a thousand dedicated professional educators who show up to work every day with one goal, to do what's best for our students and for the future of our school district and community. Many of those amazing folks are here tonight. Thank you for coming, everyone. We all know, we all know that the world is rapidly changing. Our students are growing up in an era that demands critical thinking, adaptability, and resilience. But to truly prepare them for this future, we need to ask ourselves if we, as a district, are focusing on the right things? Are we doing what really matters for their education and well-being? We are in the business of shaping minds, but that can only happen in an environment that prioritizes the right educational goals. It's about more than test scores or performance metrics. It's about creating spaces where everyone feels safe, valued, and able to learn. It's about giving our highly educated professionals the resources and respect they deserve and that they need to succeed in their classrooms. I'm having issues with this microphone, sorry. That they deserve and they need to succeed in their classrooms and with the students they serve. I want to be clear. The educators I represent do not want more. We want what works. We want policies that put the needs of students and teachers first, policies grounded in research, informed by educators, and centered on what actually happens in today's post-pandemic classrooms. We know that when teachers are empowered, supported, and respected, students thrive and achievement follows. But the truth is, in recent years, we've seen distractions take over our conversations. We've debated non-essential matters while our classrooms lack some basic supports to deal with student behavior issues, large class sizes, outdated facilities, and underfunded programs. We've watched as decisions were made about our schools by people far removed from the day-to-day realities our students and educators face. So as we move forward, I urge you to focus on what matters. Let's ensure that every student in this district is provided the ability to learn, to feel safe and respected, and to thrive. The decisions made in this room tonight and every month in the future will impact this district for years to come. Let's make sure those choices reflect what really matters, the success and well-being of our students and the professionals who work tirelessly and passionately to educate them. I'd also like to take this opportunity to recognize and honor Paul Tiffly and Linda Lunn, who have dedicated so many years of their time, energy, and most of all, heart to this district. Their commitment to serving our students, staff, and community has made a lasting impact. They have both spent countless hours attending school and district events, participating on our multiple parent advocacy committees, visiting classrooms, and learning about what is actually happening in those classrooms, and passionately advocating for positive change, and always for what's best for our schools and our students. Their guidance and dedication have shaped the experiences of our students, helping to create a supportive and vibrant learning environment. MEA recognizes that their role has not always been easy. It has required resilience, patience, and a deep commitment to the values we hold dear in this district. Yet they have approached each challenge with grace and a sincere desire to make a positive difference here in MVUSD. On behalf of the Marietta Educators Association, I thank you both for your extraordinary service to our students and unwavering support of our educators, and wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you for myself and Linda. Let's see. Is Freddie here tonight?
No, he's not.
Okay. Student Board Member Report, Sophia Shoemaker.
Hi, everyone. At our Student Advisory Council meeting on November 7th, we talked about various topics to better our schools. The first topic we talked about was a podcast and possible topics we can use on our high school campuses. We also talked about phone usage and self-regulation within the classroom. And then we also elaborated on bathrooms on campus, late start and early release, as well as office hours, and how do we utilize them? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Short but sweet. Consent, C, Consent Calendar. If you ever get a chance, look that up, because there's some interesting things there. Some of you who tinker with different kinds of things may find some very useful objects. There, these items are voted on collectively as a group upon a board member request. Items may be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and individual action. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar items C1 through C7 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. Student preferential vote?
I approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. D, Action Information Items. D1, Selection of the Annual Organizational Meeting Date, Time, and Location. Do I have a motion to select December 17th, 2024 at 5:00 PM as the annual organizational meeting date and time?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. Student preferential vote?
Yes, I approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. D2, nomination for the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly for Subregion 18A. And the question here is for the board. Would you, the board, like to nominate additional candidates and/or move candidates from the current slate? Call on each board member.
I would like to add myself to the list. I move to add myself to the list.
All right. Nancy Young. I call then, is there anybody else?
I would like to remove Stephen Schwartz from the list.
Of course. Stephen Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to add Nicholas Pardue, if he's interested in that position.
Yeah.
Okay. This is an interesting group that you don't hear about maybe once every 112 years. But they do some good work. I, let's see, we'll have to do this.
That's the correct part. So where it says, "I call for..." Would you like me to read this part for you?
Yeah.
Okay. The call for the motion would be for the following candidates to the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly, Subregion 18A. The ones listed who are currently that we know of is Madonna Gurrell from Palm Springs, Cleveland Johnson from Moreno Valley, David Sanchez from Beaumont, Melissa Williamson from Beaumont, Nancy Young from Marietta Valley, and Nicholas Pardue from Marietta Valley. That would be the motion.
Can I ask a question real quick? It's a little bit odd, timing-wise, considering elections, and we'll have new board members and what have you. Is it, is there a way to push this off for other, the other trustees to have the opportunity to join that, or?
I don't believe so. I think the timing, because of the timing of when, because this goes to all the board, all of the districts.
In December.
In December. So that's why we do the nominations now. And so for new folks, their opportunity would come in subsequent years.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing as how we have one name to strike.
Correct. I did not read that name. And I added the two that this group has recommended or nominated.
So. All in favor of the motion?
Wait, we need someone to make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, good, okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Candidates listed, Madonna Gurrell, Cleveland Johnson, David Sanchez, Melissa Williamson. Candidates listed, Madonna Gurrell, Cleveland Johnson, David Sanchez, Melissa Williamson, Nancy Young, and Nick Pardue are nominated for candidacy to the California School Board Association Delegate Assembly for Subregion 18A. That's exciting.
Out of curiosity, I'm assuming that all the boards in this subregion then vote and then they let you know how it went. So we'll vote for ours in...
Correct. And there's a... All of these folks, including the two of you, there's some paperwork to complete and you have some time to get, you have a time to get that done, to make that final list. So when that comes to the inbox, make sure it's completed so that you can get your names formally to the rest of the group to be on there.
Got it. Thank you.
Have a motion on, had a motion.
That's completed.
Yeah, okay. There's so many things going on there. There was one to give you a million dollars, but it didn't get voted on. Okay. A student preferential vote for that.
Yes, I approve.
We'll have a test in the morning. Okay. Item D3, Adoption of Resolution Number 24 slash 25-12, authorizing compensation for Board Members Linda Lunn and Nancy Young for their absence at the October 23rd, 2024 Special Board Meeting. And the person's named can't vote for themselves, so this will have to be nomination motion by one of the two of you left, or me. I move that they be compensated for their absences. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Do we have a conversation about this?
Student, yeah, go ahead.
Because we need to vote next, right?
Yeah, comments would be next.
Comments.
Yeah, comments. Go ahead.
That was the contentious. We had a packed house for that special meeting, and that was scheduled pretty far out in advance and then canceled last minute. So I'm, I would like to have an idea of what happened because we had a lot of angry constituents in the crowd that night who were pretty upset about what was going on. It was known. We had discussed it throughout October. And I was, I was pretty unhappy to see that with the community wanting us to have this conversation before the elections, that suddenly we were canceling it and then suddenly people couldn't attend. That's the problem I have. It's not, it seemed highly unusual that it was canceled, highly unusual that people suddenly couldn't make something that was scheduled for so long.
I was available on Thursday, but I work a lot during the week, and I did have an obligation on Wednesday that I could not get out of, so.
I think that, so Mr. Pardue, just to add some clarity to that, yes, there was a special board meeting scheduled for Thursday, the 24th. There was not any formal business items for the board in consultation, even though the prior meeting had had some concern, obviously parent or community concerns about the property purchase. And so in consultation with the board president, it was determined to cancel the special board meeting. It was later reestablished with a specific agenda item of the property discussion, but the only date that worked for folks, including our attorney, was Tuesday or Wednesday. And so that's why it came on a different day.
Okay. I'm aware that that was not how that came off because I was contacted about this issue, and there was a lot of confusion as to why that was canceled, and that came from President Diffley. So there is a big concern to me that it did not come from the president, and additionally, that Thursday was scheduled and within hours, suddenly we couldn't do Thursday. That's a huge concern. There's a big red flag for me. And then, of course, the fact that in spite of the flexibility from the remaining board members that we could do anytime that week, we couldn't figure out how to get our board here for a packed house full of community members.
I have a question about the original Thursday date. So are we hearing that the attorney would not have been able to attend a meeting on Thursday when it was on the calendar for quite a long time?
Because it was a different attorney, it was a different set of attorneys for that Thursday. It was the attorneys working regarding the property. They were available Tuesday, Wednesday. So that's why the...
So what if the meeting had been canceled? What if the meeting had not been canceled? What would have happened?
Miss, we would have added the agenda item on that Thursday if it had not been canceled. That would have, was what would have occurred, but...
And the attorney would have come on Thursday?
Possibly not, because they might have been available. As you recall, we met with certain attorneys in closed session. So I think the question here, I recognize the concern. The question is, I mean, the question before the board at the moment is, and there's a motion, a second, and so do you just want to provide that courtesy, as has been done in the past, or not?
I feel like as a board member, I'm here, and this seat that I occupy is not my seat. I have a name up here, but that's not, not, it's not mine. I don't own this seat. We are governing board that's elected by the people, and we have elections, and it matters. We serve the community. And when we have a packed house full of community members and we're not doing our job, I don't think it's right to take taxpayer dollars and then reimburse just out of courtesy for board members and trustee members that don't show up for that, for that meeting. It was contentious. It was known. It was well-known throughout the month of October that this was becoming a problem, and we were trying to address that. When I say we, I was maybe only speaking for myself, but I did not think that that went down. If it was a normal board meeting and, you know, something came out, I get it. I understand. That is not what happened in this situation.
I, as I said, I don't know, well, I know Linda had obligations. I don't know what they were, but I do work in the evening. I'm an induction coach. I could not reschedule the person I coach. She's very busy with her teaching and other, she does private teaching too. So she would have actually lost her coaching session, but y'all can do what you want to do. I'm pretty much booked every evening. I was available on Thursday. I have every board meeting blocked out that's been scheduled, so.
Well, with that being said, just to answer this, I think Ms. Young brings up a great point. If she was available Thursday, we are available any night, then why did we not have it on Thursday as it was scheduled for throughout, for the year?
The property attorney wasn't available on Thursday.
How much money are we talking about?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but usually it's just the per meeting compensation that we're considering.
Okay, I think we can vote.
Again, I'll read. D3, Adoption of Resolution Number 24 slash 25-12, authorizing compensation for Board Members Linda Lunn and Nancy Young for their absence at the October 23rd, 2024 Special Board Meeting. We have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is, because this is, in essence, a personnel matter, there is no student preferential Not a student preferential vote.
She was going to abstain anyway. She was ready to exercise.
Good job.
I'll have to buy her a soda or something after. Do people still eat sodas? Never mind. The vote. Mr. Pardue?
No.
You? Mrs. Vandergriff?
No.
You?
You need to cast a vote, Mr. Diffley.
Yeah, I was looking for that. Okay, I'll write my name in there. Diffley, yes. One, two, three. Who are we missing?
I know. That would be, because in this case, there'd only be the three voting members because Mrs. Young cannot, Ms. Lunn's not here, therefore it fails one to two.
Okay. D4, Approval of Personnel Report. Thank you. Moved?
Second.
Second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. D5, As an Assignment of High School Teacher to Teach in a Departmentalized Classroom Pursuant to Education Code 44263 for the 24-25 school year. That involves Ms. Christina Jones in Environmental Sciences. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'm sorry. Student preferential vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. D6, Learning Update Number One Presentation. This is Muchnik Jaxx, who will entertain us with a variety of multimedia experiences.
Entertain you? We'll have some interesting information for you, so thank you. Good to see you all. So good evening to our board members and to the Murrieta community. It's our pleasure to share an update on our top priority of student learning with you this evening. I will be accompanied tonight by Jennifer Schreiber and Joe Parla, our Executive Directors of Secondary and Elementary respectively, as well as Bob McGonigal, our Coordinator who oversees assessment and data. And tonight, we'll be walking you through primarily our state assessment data and providing you with some context and considerations along the way. So on the screen, you'll see our agenda for the presentation, and we're going to share a little bit of background information with you and then dive into a number of different data points. As we review the data, we will provide you with comparisons for the last two years as well as pre-pandemic levels when they are available. And we will then share some data observations and conclude with our focus areas for the coming year, which represent our key responses to the data and the identified needs that the data shows.
Just so we, just for some context, Coach's voice might carry, but okay. The 2019 testing year was the last year where the long version of the Smarter Balance assessments were given. When we returned to testing in the 2021-22 school year, the computer adaptive portion of both the math and the ELA were adjusted, basically cut in half. So the data that you're going to see for the past three years, we are comparing apples to apples. The assessment is the short form for the ELA and the math, and the science test was not adjusted after we returned to testing. Also, something that's new is the alternative assessments in English, Language Arts, Math, and Science are now fully operational. If you hear the term alternative assessments or the CAA, those are assessments that are taken by our students who have really significant disabilities. It's about 1% of the student population, so just give you a little context there.
I get the pleasure of reviewing our elementary data from our CAS assessment in ELA, our English, Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. When you take a look up here, you'll notice that the scores across the board, every grade, every subject, we saw 3%, 4% gains when you compare year to year, which is a lot to celebrate. We're excited about it in elementary. We know it's not our end goal, but we're looking at progress every year, and our students and teachers have worked very, very hard, and it's always great when that reflects in our data. One of the things that you'll notice particularly that I want to draw your attention to is our cohort data in Language Arts. It moves from in third grade, 21-22, 47%, and then last school year, that same group of students moving into fourth grade moved to 50%, and then this year with a 5% increase to 55%. And so that's the great, that's the trajectory we want to see with our students. When we go to mathematics and we follow that same cohort of students, we don't see the same growth with our students. We go from 53 to 50 to 45. That brings us to really why we're in the middle of a math pilot. We are piloting two different programs in mathematics right now. We've had a lot of parent engagement and involvement and family and community, which has been great. I actually saw one of the moms that's on our team at a math conference this weekend, so that was awesome. And then in science, we don't have that, it's just fifth grade, so you don't have that cohort data, but again, you see that increase. We've, in elementary for the last couple of years, we've really focused on supporting English, Language Arts with particularly the area of foundational reading skills, and that's been through professional development, training. We also have over 90 of our educators that are a part of the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling Program. It's known as LETERS. It's the, like, really the gold standard for foundational reading instruction. And so it's a two-year program. We have four principals at the elementary level that have just begun as well. So that's, I think that a lot of that work is also attributing to this growth, and we're excited to see that in math as well. And we also have had the new science and social studies adoptions, which, providing all of that background knowledge for our students as they take these assessments, when they read about different content, they have that background knowledge to connect to, and we also connect the student success to that. So, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to take you through the middle school data. Okay, again, with our middle school, we are also very pleased with our results. You will see that we've seen growth in every area except for our seventh grade ELA, which was flat, but still, we didn't lose there. What's interesting is middle school is a little flipped. Joe took you through some of the cohort data. Where we saw this was with our eighth grade students. If you look up at the math, 21-22 school year for sixth grade, you'll see it's a 39%. And then if you follow that down to seventh grade in 23-24, you see they moved to 41%. And then last year, the 23-24 school year, you see that we had the growth to 45%. So we had some nice growth there for that cohort, whereas we were flipped for our ELA. We did not see the same growth. It went the wrong direction, but that's okay. We're working very hard and we're very proud of our results. Our science, you will see that there was a five-point growth in science, which is really a nice and significant growth point. So very pleased with our results for middle school. And I will also take you through high school. High school, we only test in 11th grade, so you can see we had nice growth with our 11th grade, and we're very pleased with our ELA scores. Math, we were a little flat with math, or we were, we were flat with math, stayed at a 38%. However, it's important to understand how math works. So to be successful on this exam, you need to be in Math 3, or yeah, Math 3 course. And so what that means, when we look at the percentages, is that students who go beyond Math 3 their junior year, they tend to have an 80% or higher pass rate on the CAS. Students who are currently in Math 3 in 11th grade, it's almost a 50% pass rate on the CAS. But students who are not sitting in Math 3 their junior year, it's only a 5% pass. So we have our work cut out for us to be able to get more kids access to that, because if you haven't seen the standards, obviously you're not going to be more... Because if you haven't seen the standards, obviously you're not going to be more successful. But that gives a little bit more of an explanation why math is such a struggle, um, across the state to get their scores higher. And, um, science, I wanted to take you through, as a district, it appears that we went, or we did go down one percentage in science. It's interesting because our sites are in different places and we did have some sites with some significant growth and some with some more flat growth. It says twelfth grade, our students test in eleventh grade for science. The only students that test for twelfth grade are the ones that missed it in their eleventh grade year. So that's a very small number, so we're not really concerned with the percentages on the twelfth grade. And I will turn it back to Bob.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about student group data. Um, the, uh, you can see overall, from the, from the prior year, we were up, this is grades three through eight and high school. So this is all of the grade levels combined. We're up two percent in math from, in ELA from the prior year, five percentage points in math, and eight percentage points in science. So we made progress in all three assessed areas from the prior school year. And for the last two years, we have two years of consecutive growth in, in student populations that have, we've had our challenges with in prior years. So our students that are economically disadvantaged and our students with disabilities, we have two consecutive years of growth in English, Language Arts, Math, and Science.
So the next three slides, we have to break them out just because of the number of student groups. But they're breaking down data for students by race and ethnicity. It just helps us identify how we're doing in each of those student groups too. Um, you'll see in ELA that most of our student groups made some growth, but there are differences in the achievement of all students and some of the student groups. So in particular, significant learning gaps still exist for our American Indian students. Granted, that is a very small student group, just want to note that. But they are twenty-three percentages below all of our students. And then our Black or African-American student group is ten percentage points below. Hispanic or Latino and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander student groups are also below, but to a lesser degree at six percentage points. So it just kind of reveals, um, kind of how each of those are going, are doing, and that is in English, Language Arts. When we move on to math, um, again, most of our groups maintained or improved scores, um, just as they had an ELA. Um, but in relation to the performance of all students, our Black or African-American student group is significantly below in math, eighteen percentage points. Um, the American Indian, Hispanic Latino, and Pacific Islander student groups are slightly below all students, a difference of five to seven percentage points.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does your team have a, a reason why there's such a disparity?
Do we have a reason why?
Yeah. There's a variety, I mean, that's, that's a pretty glaring gap. This is a significant problem and I'm just not sure, are we doing anything to address the issue? And what are some of the things that, what, what are we doing? There's one last thing, I, I should add this because I don't like throwing that out there too, because I'd see the scores are, I don't like looking at those scores. Um, any of the scores don't look very good. And I, I listened to actually the opening statement here by the MEA president. You know, test scores, it's more than test scores, education's more than test scores. I've heard from a number of teachers, being a teacher myself, uh, that these state stat tests are not very good. And I've seen some of the questions, especially in math, uh, often are testing other things than math, uh, like reading, or being able to read and, and, and comprehend even what the question's asking, not the process, the math process itself. So I'll hear from science teachers, the science is barely even science involved in these questions. And so what's the efficacy of these tests? Do we, do we poll our teachers to find out whether or not we think this is really measuring our, our students' knowledge in these, in these, uh, areas? And has the district taken steps so that we can see other data that might indicate where we are seeing those gaps? And why students might be struggling in the, in those. So I, I guess what I'm looking for, if I'm a parent or I'm concerned, is just, I, I'm, I'm not sure this is telling me a lot, other than we're not doing really good at this test that the state came up with. And I, I'd hate to call this, uh, man, I'd hate to call them experts if there's so many teachers that are concerned about what that test even looks like for our students and if it's testing the right things. I, that was a lot. Uh, can we get deeper into this, maybe after this presentation, I suppose, to, to address those issues?
You're asking a lot of issues rather than me just presenting the actual data. That's like a whole separate conversation.
Is that a conversation your team has though?
Absolutely. To, to some degree, and we've had some of the conversations with you, like when we've gone over some of the testing. And I agree that sometimes we're testing other skills while we're testing that. But I don't think that we're sacrificing the content, like of science, for instance. You're still doing science, um, thinking and science skills, but literacy is a big part of those. So I, you know, complex question, we would take a complex discussion.
It would. I will, and I think the public needs to know that.
Yeah.
Gee, that's the only reason I bring it up, is not to put you on the spot so much, but there's a lot of people listening to the recording and need to know the data that they're seeing. There's, there is some concern about the test itself and how, how effective it is at measuring our students' skill sets in those subject areas.
I will take issue with one thing you said, which is that we're not doing well. I think we're doing, we are gradually making progress and reaching in some areas or exceeding some areas pre-pandemic levels. And when you compare, and again, it's the test, so you know, I know how you're feeling about that. But in terms of how we compare state and countywide, we're doing very well. Um, I, I know sometimes the numbers don't represent that, um, but we are, we're looking at progress. That's what we're working on.
Let me just add a little bit to that conversation. That we do look at multiple measures. I'm sure you've heard that phrase before. And for those in the community, like, multiple measures just means test scores are one indication of a student's performance. Keep in mind, these are like two to three days out of an entire school year. If a kid wasn't feeling well or something was bad at home, they may not try as hard or whatever. It's, it's a snapshot in time. So the things that really are, again, the things that are real, also measure the student's performance, it would be like, did they complete the A to G requirements for college? Are they participating in a military program, like an ROTC program and complete that? Did they complete a career pathway? Or did they complete a dual enrollment class at college? So there's another indicator called the CCI, or the College and Career Success Indicator, which is another set of measurement to, to describe that. And then our profile of a graduate also has some indicators that are also other ways to measure readiness.
Does each department have, I know they have pacing guides and do they have benchmarks? Are there other, uh, assessments that, that we could see in terms of data that might?
Hundred percent. Yeah.
Give us a better idea.
We have layers of, uh, local assessment data, so we have the I-ready as well and our STAR testing for secondary. And then we have, um, common assessment data that we're really just starting to implement with the PLTs. And that's something we could study further as well. Yeah, I mean, they're good questions. It's a good conversation. Um, the last slide that shows the race and ethnicity data is science. And again, growth for most students, two student groups that are achieving below are the Hispanic Latino, which is eight percentage points below, and Black, African-American, seventeen percentage points below. Um, and of course, these are differences that are important to us and we acknowledge that and we continue to address it. And that was another question that you asked, Mr. Perdue, is are we addressing it? Yes, uh, so much of what we do is trying to provide, um, uh, intervention when needed and strong tier one instruction to move students forward.
Okay, something we are very proud of is our graduation rate. So we increased by another percentage point. So we are now at ninety-seven point seven. And last year we were in the top ten districts in the state and I would assume that we're going to at least be in the top ten this time as well, so that we're very proud of that. When you look at the A through G rates, um, it's definitely an area we could work on. We've had a hard time coming back after, um, COVID and so we're still continually looking at that. Um, it is becoming more challenging because the state is also changing or the, the system, the college system is changing. So our, um, A through G, now you must take math three for it to be considered A through G, which that's a new rule. So as I was saying earlier, not all of our students are sitting in math three. So it's, it, these are some of the issues that we're, we're faced with. So, but it's definitely something we're working on and looking at strategies to be able to improve.
I'll talk to you briefly about our, our English learners. The, the, uh, the assessment, the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, or the LPAC. You can see, um, that compared to the prior two years, we had twenty-four percent this past year performing at the highest level of, uh, well-developed. The, the LPAC performance distributions are like one to four, with four being highest. So a student who's just beginning is likely to be in level one. And the goal is to have them produce, to advance a performance level per year. And hopefully by the end of year four, they will be at the well-developed stage. The well-developed stage is one part of the criteria for students to be able to, to be, to re-designate as English fluent. That score is used in conjunction with either a local measure or with the state assessment. So if a student meets the ELA fluency on the LPAC, and then they also meet it on the state assessment or our local assessments, then they could be a candidate for re-designation. So you can see the reclassification rate below is about fifteen percent of our English learners overall were el, were able to reclassify last year. Okay, just, just some overall observations. Um, our, as, um, Ms. Schreiber mentioned, we're consistently in the top ten districts in the state uh, in terms of our graduation rate. Our, uh, our, our assessment results are well above the state and county assessment results, so to look at them in context. Versus the state average, we're thirteen percentage points higher in English, Language Arts. We're ten percent percentage points higher in mathematics. And we're thirteen percent higher in science. As we look at our scores, though, we really like to use ourselves in terms of our own measuring stick. We are, we are showing progress. But are the scores where we want them to be yet? No, they're not there yet. And we can do better and we continue to put systems in place and, um, instruction in place that will help us to continue to move that metric. And as far as, maybe I could clarify some things in terms of the assessment design. There are blueprints for the state assessments in all the content areas and they're cross-referenced with the specific standards that they assess. So if, so if we are, so this, this test is highly aligned to the California state standards. And you might have also heard the term, uh, SBAK. That stands for the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. It's a number of states across our country. It's one of the two main assessment consortiums where the, the worked on developing this, this, the assessments to match the standards. We do see that there is a high correlation with how our students do on our benchmark assessments and the I-ready and the STAR, and also how they perform on the, on the CASP. So we, we do believe that the results are a valid measure, not the only measure, but a valid measure of where our students are currently performing.
Okay, so as we conclude, just want to remind you that, um, our department has really been focused on two key focus areas to support continuous learning, um, improvement. Um, it's our second year in doing this. Um, we really believe we're going to continue to have these focuses for some time. They're not like quick fixes, they're really systems that we're trying to build with intention and thoughtfulness. So in PLCs, we're really focused on teacher collaboration around what standards we are teaching, how we know students have learned those standards through our, um, local assessments, um, how we respond when they have not or when we need to extend for students. It's really about empowering teachers and teams to focus on the right work and the right conversations to impact student learning. Um, the second focus area is MTSS. Um, we're continuing to build our tier one practices at our sites that promote positive school climate and behavior. This year we are also looking at tier two collaboration and what teachers can do in the classrooms to build a strong environment for learning and respond effectively when students demonstrate negative behavior. To be clear, the work on climate and behavior is occurring because we know it will positively impact student learning. When students are in staff are part of a strong school culture and that is also evident in the classroom, we pave the way for robust learning for all students. So we're really excited about the continued focus on these areas and the evidence of growth that we are seeing in both areas. It's amazing. As we walk around in PLTs or we go to sites and have conversations with staff, there are a lot of great things happening. We truly want to thank our teachers, our staff, and our administrators for the investments that they are making into these investment, into these initiatives. And, um, I really do believe that the hard work is paying off. Um, again, back to the growth that we're seeing, it takes a lot to move three percent of our kids up in proficiency to be able to do that. So I, I don't want to make light of the, um, of, of the positive impact that they're having in the work that they're doing. Okay, and, um, we talked a little bit about this, Dr. Andrews talked about the CCI, but the State Accountability Dashboard is released soon, uh, December first, actually. Uh, at our February Board Workshop, we'll share out more about the dashboard and our data on it. Uh, with several years of data, we can now show status and growth for all of our metrics. New this year, long-term English learners will be a student group. Those are students that have been English learners for six or more years. They will be on the dashboard for accountability for the first time. They're also needing to be included in our LCAP. All of the metrics on the dashboard are listed for you on this slide. Um, you can see that list of chronic absenteeism, suspension rate, English learner progress, long-term English learners, graduation rate, college career indicator, uh, English, Language Arts performance, and math performance. Thank you for your time. We're really pleased with the growth that we're seeing and we really feel like we're headed in the right direction with our key focus areas. But we do know that we have more work to do as we work to, um, uh, ensure that we have achievement for all students within our system. So please let me know if you have any questions at this time.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Uh, I, I have a question and so you're, Dr. Andrews, you're probably going to have to help me remember. But, so looking back at some of the presentations before, I think that, um, did, is it, is it the case that we have twenty-five percent of kids in special ed right now and we expect that to grow to thirty? Am I remembering correctly?
Yep, it's a little off by that. We currently have approximately nineteen to twenty percent of our students who are in special education. And that number has stayed relatively steady. Across the state, not just with us, those numbers have grown, um, by two to three percent, depending on where you live. Um, we actually tend to have a higher percent of students with disabilities and a portion of those are people who have, um, they have come to Marietta and they have moved in, or they have transferred in, sometimes even with our denial that an appeal process through the county. They come to us because they know of the quality experience they get in our schools. I know of many families, especially students with disabilities, who purposely buy a home in the neighborhood so they could receive the quality of service. And so I think the average in, in, the average percent of students with disabilities in districts in Riverside County is between about around fourteen or fifteen percent. So we're about four to five percent higher. And it's because of that attraction to come here. We haven't seen like that big ten percent growth. We've seen like a little incremental growth. Um, and it, we actually see it, it happens during the course of the year as well. So we may start out around eighteen, nineteen percent, but during the course of the year, it kind of rises. And that's because kids are qualifying for services during the year. And it's also not quite balanced out, but we also have students who are, especially in the upper grades, who are moving from having an IEP to like a monitor status or maybe a 504 plan and don't need the same level of service. And that's the intention of special education services, is to provide support and structure around these learning disabilities. And as they gain those skills, they need less and less of it. But we are still seeing in general a high number.
Well, as a follow-up to that, um, so I think you and I discussed in one of our meetings that the, um, the diagnosed disability, the, the primary disability, um, for twenty-one percent of the, the students in special ed is other health impairment. So it's not a, it's kind of a catch-all category. And my question is, um, I'm just wondering with this new phonics, uh, training that the teachers are getting, I'm wondering if we're expecting with the, um, Strengthened Reading Program, with the Science of Reading, if we're expecting possibly to see fewer kids in that category?
Could you speak specifically to letters and what it does?
I do agree. I think that, um, we, I'm actually really proud-
I think that we, I'm actually really proud of the work our teachers have done in creating this continuum of phonics skills through kindergarten through, really at third grade, it culminates with multi-syllabic words. But as they, as we have a very clear MTSS response with a tier-one in our classrooms, and then a lesser percent of students that would require a tier-two support and pull out intervention, and also getting those materials to students who currently have an IEP so that, you know, there's a possibility of students being able to exit the IEP once they build up the skills that they're required. And not to say this is going to happen for all kids, but we do know with that intensive support and that intensive instruction right from the beginning that we are already experiencing a lot of growth in students within that area. So yes, we are hoping that that occurs.
Thank you.
Thank you. See, we need a vote on this.
No, there's no vote on this one.
Oh.
Okay.
The district audit report. So yeah, we do need to vote.
Presentation and acceptance of the district audit report for fiscal year 2324. Mr. Whittington.
I'm going to turn it over to our audit partner from CWDL. It's a new audit firm we have this year. We entered into a new contract for audit services. So it's a brand-new independent audit firm. So we have John Dominguez, who's an audit partner with CWDL here tonight to present the audit report. He'll also be presenting the bond financial performance audit after this item.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We've got 110 pages, so I better start and move quick to get through.
I'll be back.
Yeah. We really have some positive results. And so as Mr. Whittington mentioned, we were selected to come in. So this is our first year auditing the district. We work with a number of districts throughout the state. But I think it always speaks volumes when we're here this early in the audit season, mid-November presenting a completed report. Certainly speaks volumes to the caliber and the quality of the staff, not only here in the district office, fiscal finance, that's our primary area of focus, but we're out at a number of the school sites, doing attendance, other compliance areas. So it's really a collaborative process throughout the year. And again, we've got really positive results. So I'll just briefly touch on, throughout that 110-page document, there are four opinions that are firm issues. Those are kind of the key element that we bring to the audit process. So these are managements, financials. The auditors are rendering their opinion on those. And the first is our independent auditor's report. That's our opinion on the accuracy and the completeness of the financial data, as well as the disclosure throughout the report. So we've rendered an unmodified opinion. That's the best opinion at our disposal, which means the financials were accurate, they were complete, and included all required disclosures. And so very, very good report there. Our second of four opinions is our independent auditor's report on internal control of our financial reporting and compliance. And so that's where, when we're testing controls over the expenditure process, which not only ties in with the bond, but also with, you know, general expenses, payroll, HR, all those key areas we're looking at controls. We did not identify concerns in the control environment, so a good opinion there. And then we're also rendering the last two opinions on federal and state compliance. So as you're well aware, very, very strict procedures mandated by both state and federal agencies on what we're required to look at. And so in continuing with the predecessor auditor's results, which did not have findings in the 2023 period, this June 30th, 2024 period, we did not identify findings that rose to the level to be reported. You will note, we did have several adjustments to the prior balances that we worked with management and the prior auditors in Note 16, page 68 of that report. Not something that we were overly concerned with. It's not uncommon in the process to rotate auditors where you get a fresh set of eyes. You really go back and kind of dig into some historical data. And so we did that on some of the CFD and PFA activity in the debt. So we had some adjustments there, got management support and approval to record those, as well as the predecessor auditors. So again, that's just kind of one of the courses of the process, not uncommon, not something we had a concern over, the control environment. And then some lease activity from a Gatsby standard, Gatsby 87. So with that, you know, just again to conclude, from the district side, we felt the process was very collaborative, very transparent. We were given access to everything we asked for and appreciated staff's help. And I'll open and pause for questions on the district report. And then you can let me know procedurally if we need to take a vote before I go into the bonds.
Correct.
Yeah.
Any questions on the audit?
Well, just, is there any sort of assistance for the novice here? Is there any kind of an overview of any significant findings? Is there a certain page that would be easier for, you know, someone to?
So just to clarify, there were no significant findings. So that's a good thing when we don't have those in the report. You certainly could look at that Note 16 where it does recap the adjustments that were recorded in the financial activity. So those ended up netting to a very small amount. I should be careful with that term because it was several hundred thousand. In terms of materiality over the district's financial statements taken as a whole, we would, in the audit sense, when you have a $300 million ending that position, deem that $191,000 to not materially impact the reader of the financials. Certainly, any dollar we would deem as significant. And thus, the emphasis on getting those accurate and complete. So I would draw your attention there. And then we also issued our governance letter where we described any difficulties encountered with management, which there were none. If we had any disagreements with management, we would bring those to your attention. So that would be another place to look to see if there were any significant challenges. But there were none. So certainly, we would raise those to your attention if they are identified at any point in the future.
So the first thing that you pointed out, which page is that on again?
That's on page 68. That's going to be Note 16.
Note 13, I don't see 16.
Oh.
What am I missing? What am I missing here? Oh, 68 on the paper.
Yes, sorry, not the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it'd be 72 on the PDF page, document page 68. So again, that was, you know, we're confirming those custodial balances. And again, that's something that maybe isn't done every year. So a first-year audit, we're confirming all of those balances, working with management, and identified one that needed an adjustment there. And then those right-of-use leased assets, and then the leased asset accumulated depreciation, you'll also note there, that required some adjustment. All of that, you know, netting to that $191,000 that we reflected, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah. And I was looking at the balance sheet and the, is there, I'm just reading too many numbers, so this is out of my league for sure. What is the status of Measure BB Fund? Because I see 16 million.
That's.
28 million.
That's the next agenda item.
That's the next.
Next agenda item.
Okay, I'll wait.
Other questions?
We're all done. Just need a motion.
Okay. We need a motion at a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. No comments? Student preferential vote, in favor, opposed?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to D8, presentation and acceptance of the district building fund, Measure BB, which has been with us for quite a while. Financial and performance audit report for fiscal year 202324. Mr. Whittington.
We're just back to the same person.
Okay. Thank you for another introduction, Mr. Whittington. I'll, yeah. And to maybe just start with Measure BB and tying into why you might not have seen that at face value in the district audit report, that's included in the non-major capital project fund. So if you were to look toward the back of that district audit report, page 89, document page 94, you would see the building fund, which represents Measure BB. And all of those roll up into the total non-major capital projects fund. So it's just a nuance in governmental accounting world of why you wouldn't see Measure BB at face value because there are a number of other related capital funds that roll up together. So if you did want to link from that report we just went through to the one that I'll briefly cover now, it would be reflected there on that, the page of the district audit. So to start off with answering your question, it is that 16.2 million in remaining restricted fund balance for Measure BB. We also noted the assets, the investment account receivable, as well as payable for some of the activity. And then our opinion over these financials from the independent auditor's report perspective was also unmodified. We felt that the activity was properly segregated to Measure BB. That's something we look at. And then a very large emphasis for us is the allowability of the expenditures, obviously, in alignment with Proposition 39. And so when we're going through and doing that detailed expenditure, transaction-level detail, there was the 13.7 million in current year expense. And we audited of that amount, I want to say it was 85% just under 84 and some change rounding up to 85% of that activity that we looked at as far as sampling actual transactional-level detail to ensure that we felt it was in alignment with not only Proposition 39, but we're also tying that back into the ballot language that went out to voters when they approved and gave the district that authorization to issue those funds. And in our opinion, our conclusion on the compliance, as well as the financial reporting, was that those were allowable and used in proper conjunction with the ballot language, Proposition 39, and proper control environment. So we've also rendered an unmodified opinion for this June 30th, 2024 period echoing the same results that the prior audit firm had for prior periods, especially 2023. So with that, I was just going to point out briefly on the bond that there was some positive interest income, which was nice to see those treasury funds kind of trailing some of the larger global markets and seeing that turnaround there. And also a net increase in the fair value of cash in county. That was also something where we had seen that kind of swing the other way in some preceding years. So some good results on interest income, on increase in fair value. And then I touched on the operating results and that 85% that we tested. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about Measure BB audit or results from those procedures.
Board?
I have, does that expire at some point? Does that money need to be spent? And a question for you or for Darren, I suppose. The property purchase that we just pulled out of, was the money going, coming out of this fund? Or where was that money coming from? Okay, so out of Measure BB and then, and then out of our funds.
To clarify.
Go ahead.
We were in escrow, so we had paid a deposit, a $100,000 deposit. That was the only transaction that would have been reflected in our financials as of June 30th. We hadn't closed the transaction. There's not, there's not money that will be added back to BB.
Right, yeah, because we didn't, we didn't follow through. But had we followed through and there was some, what I was trying to get, the idea was, you know, again, simple, my own account at home, I'm looking at it. That money would have came out of here. Now it's still there, is what, I'm just asking if, am I looking at the money that's still there because we didn't?
Yes, I think the important thing is that these financials are as of June 30th. So they're a couple of months old. At June 30th, we're in progress with MES. So there's a lot of contracts that were open at that time. So there's a note in the audit reports on page 10 of the audit report. I don't know what the PDF page is. But we describe our ongoing construction commitments. So those are contracts we had entered into, but work had not been completed. So it's money we will spend as soon as those contracts complete. But they're not recognized as accounts payable because that work hasn't been completed yet. So there's about 5.2 million, 5.3 million. That will come out. That will come out of BB, but it's not reflected in the financials yet because they, the obligation hasn't occurred from a financial reporting perspective yet.
Got it. And then the other thing is that Measure BB can, has an element that would go to salaries as part of negotiations? Or is this just the audit overall for everything that you're discussing? Because I thought BB funds had to go.
It doesn't go to salaries.
Right, that's what I was getting at. So that's when you said we're into negotiations. Negotiations is separate than, from the BB.
I don't think I said negotiations.
Okay, maybe I'm hearing something.
Sorry, I was talking about the contracts.
Oh, that part, okay.
There's contracts that were in the, that are in process that have, we've already negotiated the contract.
I hear negotiations automatically as a teacher, you think, okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm getting some money, maybe.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with negotiations.
All right, got it, understood.
I have a quick question. So on page 12, where it talks about the report on compliance and other matters, and compliance, we perform tests of the building funds' compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, and contracts. Non-compliance, with which could have a direct and material effect on the determination of financial statement amounts. However, providing an opinion on compliance with those provisions was not an objective of our audit. And accordingly, we do not express such an opinion. So, so can you kind of break that down? So you, you did perform tests, but it's not, but it wasn't an objective of your audit? What does that mean?
I'm smiling because we get the question a lot. And I can sum it up best as it's boilerplate audit jargon that says we don't test 100% of every transaction, so we can't give a definitive opinion. And we were also engaged to report on the accuracy of the financial elements, as well as the compliance. And so by doing so, we have to look at controls to do that. But we're not testing 100% of controls, we're not testing 100% of transactions. So we feel very confident in the opinions we render. But this is kind of the audit language that says there could have been something that we didn't catch from our procedures that our intent was not to come and give, you know, a foolproof opinion on that. So, you know, that's our.
And that's, and that is because the audit is a sampling.
Exactly. So I referenced that 85% that we tested, you know, obviously something in that 15%. We designed those tests to give us confidence greater than 95%, you know, statistically significant confidence. But it's just a way of saying and making the reader aware in a very, you know, non-easy way to read that there is some uncertainty. But we feel very confident, obviously, in our opinion, from a materiality perspective, so.
All right, thank you.
So would you have any direction? So what, what type of entity would be responsible for providing an opinion on compliance? That's not your area, but is that?
So what we say was if we become aware of an instance of non-compliance, we report that. But this, you know, opinion, this audit, you know, is financial in nature. So we're looking at the financial transactions. We weren't engaged to look solely at controls and solely at compliance. So to answer that, there's not one, you know, audit, state, federal, or local that does that, you know, 100%. So this is going to be your most, you know, probably direct source for identifying instances of non-compliance, control deficiencies, or material deviations on the financials. So again, I know it reads a little bit weird, but, but, you know, we certainly feel confident that these are accurate, these are complete financials, and that you're in compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
D8.
There's an acceptance of the report.
We have to vote, I believe.
Yeah, we have.
There's an acceptance, so the board just has to accept that.
Okay. We can go ahead and vote, there's three of us here.
You have to call for a motion, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Presentation and acceptance of the district building fund Measure BB, financial and performance audit report for fiscal year 2023/24. A motion is in.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
And I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
We did that.
Yes, thank you. Okay, student preferential vote, in favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Let the record show that Mr. Pardew had stepped out of the room. It still carries with a three majority vote for accepting the report.
Okay. I should have asked that question before. D9, approval of 2025/26 annual renewal of services between Super Co-op Joint Powers Authority and Marietta Valley Unified School District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We're in key, C, first, and you're in key, D, okay.
I'm the second.
Second, right. Any comments? We're, we're talking about.
It's food.
D9, okay, that's just, no comments. Student preferential vote.
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. D10. Paper feels like it's double. D10, Approval to Award Contract to Arrow Restaurant Equipment and Supplies for Cafeteria Serving Equipment in Response to Request for Proposal Number
Call for a motion?
Yeah, call for a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? I'll comment, comment some of that. Some of that equipment is really neat. What's that thing called?
A tilt skillet. I don't think that necessarily is part of this. We are modernizing our middle and high, our kitchens to do more from scratch cooking.
That is very cool.
That's excellent. I still like that. That's great. All right. Student preferential vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. D11, Approval of Additive and Deductive Change Orders for Contracts C0000869, B75, 875, and 878 for the Murrieta Elementary New Classroom Building Project. Get a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? By the way, if any of, any of you have not visited that, I want you to go do it. It's a beautiful design. It fits into the neighborhood in an excellent way. It makes you feel like it's been there forever, and yet it's quite new and beautiful. So let's see, now that I've finished doing a favor for the architect. Student preferential vote?
In favor.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Always interesting when you see a new playground, as we did for the elementary school, how quickly kids adapt to it, doing things that I would not even think of. Just went to it like honey, bee to a honey. Excellent job. D12, Approval to Award a Contract to Allegiance Electric, Inc., in the Amount of $155,898 and no cents for the Solar Panel Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments? I have a question on that. How long has that panel been in? That's probably a hard question to answer.
So these are panels at Alto Mirieta. So these are ones who are damaged in a car accident, a year, a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago.
Thank you.
So we're finally getting, there was some additional work that, renewed engineering work, I think that had to be done.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Student preferential vote?
In favor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. D13, Approval to Award a Contract to Reed Family Enterprise, Inc., in the Amount of $420,934 and no cents for the Food Services Infrastructure Project. This requires a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Comments? Could we, could we get a, just a brief idea of what the infrastructure project is?
Jill's here. Yeah, Jill, would you come to the podium, please? Jill's our Director of Nutritional Services.
I wanted to see your face. I haven't seen it in a long time. Hi.
She's been working. Oh, come a little closer. There you go.
Trying to suit our kitchens with some more cooking equipment. And so a lot of those pieces require different electrical, different plumbing, floor troughs. So essentially, those funds are being used to, to do the infrastructure, so that we can put that equipment in.
Carry on with good things. Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Student preferential vote?
In favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Superintendent reporting. Dr. Andrews.
Thank you. I want to share something that we're doing within the district for all of our senior citizens in the community. And, and so we have created a VIP pass for anyone 16 over to get into any of our high school, or actually, it says it's a lifetime pass for VAPA events. Okay, so they'll still accept a donation, gladly accept a donation. But you can show this pass. All you have to do is get one. Monica's got some in the back. We're making available to any senior citizen in the community for free, and that gets you into any visual performing arts activity, like the plays that we're talked about, such as The Addams Family. I know one school's doing Mamma Mia later this year. You can get in for free. And there are two passes, Mr. Difley, but your wife has left, so can you make sure she gets it?
I will.
Okay.
She'll feed breakfast tomorrow.
Not recorded, and you'll have to really, no, never mind.
You are being recorded.
This, this is so exciting.
So, and those are, that's actually, it's not a paper card. Those are plastic cards. I believe they were created by our students over at Murrieta Valley High School in our engineering program. They have a laser engraver. And so those students created those for honor behalf. We have a stack of them. And we're already providing them out in the community at different senior residence centers already. And so those are available to any, someone, anyone 16 or, 16 or over who'd like a pass, can ask for one, we'll hand them, come on in. We're able to do this because the state, with the passage of Proposition 28, that really provided a real enhanced set of funds for our secondary schools and across the district and elementary. And so when we're always kind of begging and borrowing to grab dollars to pay for scripts and copyright services and so forth, that is not the same problem anymore. And so we want to pass that on to our community. So come and see, come and see for free. But again, they would gladly take a donation at the snack bar, so, because there's still, that's how they pay for pizza and things like that. Couple of other parts to the report. Again, during the season, lots of fall festivals, able to attend that, trunk or treat activities would come into the season. I have talked to, I've been at booster clubs and seen the great work that parents do right alongside teachers and administrators to really make terrifically rich experiences at schools. I've been able to get in, like, the fall festival at my grandchildren's school, Lisa J. Mail's, a trunk or treat activity over at Buchanan, and on the field at Alto Mirrieta. It's been great to just be involved and see families and talk with them about things that they're doing and what they're experiencing. And the hundreds and hundreds, and literally, I think you can't have had over 2,000 people come to their trunk or treat. The school's got like 750, 800 kids. And so there's a lot of folks that come out to participate. And I think people from other schools who are not even part of us are still coming to participate because it's a great one. I want to recognize the Rotary Club of Murrieta and participate in partnership with Old Town Temecula Rotary and the City of Murrieta for hosting the 16th Annual Field of Honor. All of our fifth grade students are able to attend. I got out there today along with a couple of our schools from Murrieta Elementary School, Alto Mirrieta, and Montevista, and to be there with fifth graders. Tonight, and they're, they're probably wrapping up, is all of our middle school choirs are performing there tonight as well. And that's at the candlelight ceremony. And our high school ROTC programs also accompanied the groups. Today was Murrieta Valley High School Marine ROTC, and they all kind of take turns which day they're going to be there. And hundreds of students are out there helping to set up the field on Friday, on Saturday, last Saturday. I don't know if we'll get hundreds again when it's time to tear it down, but they were there for the setup. Again, as reported by our students, great fall athletic season. Murrieta Valley High School, for the first time, the girls won the section in volleyball. We've got some students who are going on to compete both individually, and it's just great to see that great level of success, as you heard the students report. And then lastly, I encourage all of our parents, anyone attending, to participate in the boundary. Get online and look at the boundary adjustments that are being considered by our parent committee, and just take a look and see what that looks like. That's a process to, it does a couple of things. The goal is to alleviate overcrowding and better utilize schools that have more space. We'll need to do that. In essence, we're right sizing and balancing some schools. But this always will come with change, and change is hard. And so this is really, a really fiscally responsible way to look at where do we put kids and house them there, but it does come with adjustments. And so we encourage people to do that. There will be open houses, public open houses, not just an online look at this type of process that you would do, but there will be open houses on Tuesday, December 10th, at Vista Murrieta High School, and then again on Wednesday, December 11th, at Thompson Middle School, where the public is welcome to come and look at these. And there'll be opportunity to give feedback and comment, which both district staff, if trustees attend, they'd be listening to this, and the consultants to take in feedback. There eventually will be an additional survey as they kind of come closer to those final, the final considerations, the final maps and looks of what that looks like, for the community to, again, participate in a survey. And we'll be doing additional communication. As a matter of fact, if you go to the district website now, you can't get past the notice about these meetings until you say, okay, I got it. So we're trying to help make sure people understand and know to come. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Van der Grift.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to continue on with what he said about the, the redistricting. And I just went, I guess it was yesterday, to a team's meeting where the, where Wolfert gave a presentation on that. And it's actually pretty fascinating. There's different, different committees. There's the committee that was, I guess it was a parents', and then there's, so they've come up with a plan, and then there's a couple concept plans, and also I think the staff has also been working on it. So eventually, there's going to have to be a consolidation of, of all that. But if you look at, well, I'm, I'm pretty sure at the December meetings, there's probably going to be the results of what it's going to look like and what enrollment will look like at each school, depending on what plan is settled on. So that's pretty fascinating to see how it can be projected into the future, and how it can help us more efficiently utilize our facilities. So yeah, I did want to point out, if you go to the website, if you want more information about it, there really is a lot of information. So you'll be looking for this little thing to click on. And then, as Dr. Andrews said, the two meetings that are going to be in December, when you go to the website, it pops up and you can't see anything else until you say, okay, I got it. So you can't miss it. And then I think the last thing I want to talk about real quick here is, I, just with some reading that I've done about the science of reading and how, you know, the pendulum goes back and forth with what reading style we teach, what we use to teach kids. And there are some really good success stories with, you know, the, being very consistent with the science of reading. And so I'm encouraged that we are training our teachers in, with the letters program. And actually, in the legislature in Sacramento, they, there was, somebody introduced a bill in the last session that would have required all the public schools in California to use the science of reading. And unfortunately, that ultimately failed. And part of that was the, I think a big part of it was the opposition of, there's, there's a California Teachers Association position paper which addressed that. So if anyone is interested in seeing this, this position paper from the California Teachers Association opposing, mandating the science of reading, you can email me and I'd be happy to give that to you. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Young?
Okay, so I went to another unified sports event, but I went to the middle school event. One of the students here mentioned high school. But I went to Warm Springs Middle School, and it was all four Murrieta Middle Schools involved. And kids, again, were having a great time, getting lots of support from the regular ed kids. I just love those events. I went to the Fall Joint Meeting in San Bernardino, and they call it a Fall Joint Meeting because it's for both Riverside and San Bernardino Counties. So it's all the public school districts involved, the county boards of education. So you get, they talk about current trends. We, they have a panel. Quite interesting and informative. So I also went to the APAC meeting about a week and a half ago. This meeting, the topic was college and career readiness. They also talked about how parents can reinforce reading instruction with their kids when they have younger kids. The officers from the BSU club spoke about their club activities. Valerie Backus was there, and she talked about profile of a graduate, and also our district's excellent CTE offerings. There were counselors there who talked about career exploration. They do it through all the grades. They particularly talked about middle school and high school. And one thing that all parents need to be aware of who have high school students is that every single student gets one free CSU application. Like, you don't have to pay for the first one. I went to the LPAC meeting as well. They also talked about CTE pathways. They talked about the ELOP offerings and their meet and eat program. I think ELOP is really important, and the meet and eat, most parents work. So these kids, you know, they're relatively young. They have these enrichment programs available. They're also in a safe space, being supervised. It's the same thing in the morning. A lot of people have to get to work, you know, before school starts. I ran into that when high school started at 7:30, and my kids were in younger grades. But, you know, it's for elementary level, you can bring the kids in. They have breakfast together. They have adult supervision, and they always make it to class on time as well. So I think it's great. Okay, so I finished my fourth master's in governance class. I'm looking at dates to do the fifth and last one, so I'll be done with the series. I've been very involved in the Rotary Club Field of Honor events all week. I walked with them on Monday, on Veterans Day. There was a parade. I was in the parade with them. I have been volunteering with the fifth graders in the Field of Honor. So based, Dr. Andrews already brought this up. They bring every fifth grade class from every school, and they go through a series of stations. I've been doing the 9/11 one. They have a 9-Elec Memorial Rock Garden. So I couldn't do it today because I had that realignment boundary meeting, but I was there Tuesday and yesterday, and I'll be back tomorrow morning helping them. So, yeah, I've been really busy with that. Veterans Day is really near and dear to my heart. I'm from a military family. My father was a naval aviator for 25 years, you know, one of the people that landed on, you know, landed on aircraft carriers. I was 19 when he died, so it's kind of a sentimental day for me. And also, my older son was a marine for five years. He's now in college, working his way to law school. So I also was, okay, so I, this meeting happened right before I came here, but the, I was invited to the Coal Canyon Counselor Advisory Council. So that, their counseling program has national recognition. They're very data-driven. So some of the stuff they talked about is they're going to have a third through fifth grade career day. So I want to go to that when it happens in January. They also looked at attendance. Like, there are certain kids who have chronic attendance problems. They broke down the data, who is it? The largest group are kids from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, so they're delving into that. Yeah, and they're also working on, like, programs to teach kids, sort of to prevent behavior issues, to help them with social skills, to help them with, to deal with stuff. I thought that was quite interesting. Anyway, yeah, I, that's all I have.
Mr. Pardue?
All right. It's just nice that we were able to survive our election cycle as a country and as a community. I think it's just important, I had mentioned it briefly earlier in my comments, as we sit up on the dais, we represent the community. We're the parents' voice. And sometimes, I know in the last two years, because we're towards the end of the year and, and things are changing, sometimes that gets lost. And I noticed people, when I, I mentioned the special meeting we had, the community members come in, and so many community members don't, they're not aware entirely of what our role is and who's responsible for what. And I think it's really important. And I think it's really important that we try to make sure that we communicate that. And especially when we're up here and we're asking questions, like, for example, the test scores and academic scores. Community members want to know. I am so proud of what this district is. I love going to the different events, seeing the kids in action. My wife, as most people know, is a teacher in the district. I know how hardworking our teachers are and what a difficult situation they've been put in in so many different ways. There's so many things that are happening. And I think it's important for us to recognize, in spite of differences, and I've said this before, we're still a community. I've lived here since 2000, and my kids grew up in the schools. Many of the teachers, you know, have had my kids in class. We've gone to all the sporting events and different activities my kids have been involved in. And we love this community, absolutely adore it. And I'm a product of public school education, so is my wife, and we're pretty committed to it. I think it's important to understand the relationship changes because philosophies changes. I'm a coach, and I've never, I've, the way I look at the world is a little bit differently. I don't, I, I'm not a big fan of just congratulating to congratulate. I'm much more critical in the way I look at things. So if my kids would have brought home a report card like what I was watching, I just, it's mortifying. You know, and I know parents look at that. So I know, I know our scores, our schools are excellent. We have great schools. And I want to be able to educate parents about what's happening. Because not all parents understand that there is some controversy about, about those test scores. I'm not trying to be critical of the teachers per se, as much as just trying to educate people that there is a problem. We do need to work towards it, and we need to find solutions to some of those problems. Additionally, I'm a big fan of focusing on academic skills. It's a big deal to me. I want to make sure that our kids are prepared to move on in the future and do the things that they're really interested in doing. And so that's a very important. I also want to talk to the issue of discipline in the classroom. I attended Crime and Safety Town Hall put on by Kate Sanchez on October 15th. And there's a serious problem. And of course, most of it was a rant, I hate to say it, rant. Lots of concerns about the legal challenges that our law enforcement officers face on a day-to-day as we have CHP officers, we're having trouble recruiting CHP officers and sheriff's deputies and police because they don't feel supported by some of the state laws that come down. And I thought it was so fascinating that it's reflected on some of the teachers that respond, that they don't feel supported by the state laws that are being put down, as we talked about the issue of defiance. As, that's a very difficult challenge for us as a district to support our teachers and still follow some of these laws that seem bizarre, to say the least. So I think that's really important. And so one of my focuses, I really feel like that's a challenge that we need to address. Students can't learn if they feel like they're not in a safe environment. And if there's too much chaos in a classroom, teachers aren't going to be stressed out if they're having to deal with discipline issues that feel, they feel like they're not being supported by administrative staff, et cetera. So I think there's a lot of challenges that we need to come together as a community to try to address. And I'm hopeful that we can do those things. Also, seeing the boundary changes, I hope that the parents and people listening are aware that this is happening and that they can start weighing in as soon as possible, because that's definitely going to be an issue. And last but not least, I want to thank Julie Vandergriff for all the research she does. I want to say that there's one thing that you cannot falter for is not being prepared for a school board meeting. And I really appreciate the fact that it is difficult to come up here. And I think everybody in the election cycle, at least when it comes to school boards, everyone's kind of a novice. And I think everyone experienced that on both sides. It is, it is a learning curve. And I am really proud of you for stepping up and taking on this role. And I'm also really proud of all the work that you've done for the school and for the kids, and I know where your heart is. So I want to thank you very much for that. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. A lot of interesting things discussed tonight. Teachers are indeed teaching in a different kind of environment. And it's tough, because you've got a lot of different types of people, levels of people that perhaps have not had the kind of training that one would like when they come into a classroom. And we need to support them more. And there should be, I think, a workshop among the board members and the teacher heads to see what it is we could do to help you solve those problems. Because there is so much, when I look out at the teachers and so forth, there's so much information and help available in each person's head. Somehow can reach a lot of different students. And if your head is involved with this destruction, and this kid pushing the other kid, and, you know, it goes on and on. I was taught for 34 years, and it was a big change. So I think we need to, I think we need to address that soon. And I certainly agree, Mr. Pardue, with what you're saying. And I'd like to see a committee formed, and let's get on that. By the way, thank you for your service. Want to mention, though, my whole, whole family tree is Navy. In fact, if you go to Mobile, Alabama, you'll see a cruiser there that was commanded by my uncle. And it's now a museum. So y'all go down and have some barbecue.
Got to work on that accent.
Yeah, yeah. Into the frying pan. Very funny play. So well, I don't want to say the, the back and forth between lines between the kids. Not a word was dropped, there was not a moment's hesitation all the way through. And it was incredibly funny. And light, but still excellent. It's A Wonderful Life. Wow, what a, what a play that was. I thought, come on, you know, I've seen that movie probably 300,000 times, and I love it every time. I always get teared up. How can you, how can you possibly get anything out of this? I was thinking to myself. And I went and I was blown away. I was in, I went the last night to see the beta cast. The young man who played it, Bailey, was, I thought I was hearing Jimmy Stewart. And I approached him after the play was over. And I said, did I detect a twang? A Jimmy Stewart twang? And he said, yeah. I said, how'd you do that? And he said, I watched that thing for weeks and weeks. And he had it. He had it down pat. And I, it just, the whole thing didn't need some of the scenes that you see on the regular movie in order to make the point and, and develop the oneness with the idea and with the crew. I, we have terrific drama departments, and we have terrific kids that come out to drama. We could just get a few more guys to come into drama. I remember there was a blonde girl who got me into drama. It was great. The plays, I mean.
His wife is blonde.
I wonder if, you know, we worry about reading. Okay, we're changing a subject. Why is everybody smiling? Never mind. I wonder if we could have, and this is a lot of work, I understand that, but I wonder if we could somehow figure out reading contests, weekly perhaps, or bi-weekly or something like that, and find out for each grade level and each room. And so I know it's a lot of work, but I, I know during the summer, when the libraries put on contests, they really do well. Kids, you know, check out lots of books and they read, and they just get better because they want to read and get the prize, whatever it is. That pretty much sums everything up. The other thing that I think that I'd like to have the next board explore is middle school CTE. I think that needs to come right away, because that's the building block for coming into high school. And I know that my love for building and so forth came from the big six-foot-four German blonde instructor, Mr. Brun. Yeah, good guy. And he was, he was, he was intimidating, scared the snot out of you if you walked in there. But he taught us a great deal about all the tools. And I can do many things around the house, including build, building simple furniture, all thanks to what he taught. And that started in eighth grade. And then, when I came into high school, I was motivated to take another course or two in drafting and different things. And they were all helpful in one way or another in my lifetime. And I want, I want our middle schools to be successful in that. As much as I want the kids to be successful with reading and mathematics, boy, you need mathematics too. So that's my charge. It's been a lovely time. I've enjoyed the conversations, even the heated ones. And I hope that the next board does extremely well and solves all our problems. And all we have to do is share Twinkies or something. Let's see. Ms., I call for a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting at 7:34 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Student preferential vote?
She left already. So I would vote yes for her. She gave me her proxy.
Thank you, I don't blame her. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for...